I'll go ahead and call to order the special meeting of the Yountville Town Council for March 27, 2018, for our Envision Yountville Workshop. Roll call, please.
Member Doorman?
Here.
Member Moller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dornbecker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Let the record show that Member Durham will be joining us later.
Right, thank you. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance and we will be facing out the front doors of the building toward the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a motion to adopt our agenda for today.
So moved.
Vice Mayor, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Public comment? Anyone? Anyone? No, thank you. Let's get right to it. Overview of the general plan goals.
Alright, good afternoon. This is the second of two study sessions before the Town Council. And what you'll see is that we've changed the format of today's meeting based on feedback that we received from you at that February study session. And what we're going to do is slow down and take a step back in order to answer the question of what a general plan is and why it's important to Yountville, to keep you informed of the process that we've been through up to this point and to share feedback we've received from the community, and then to walk you through the housing element and veterans' home issues tonight. We want to share that one of the major themes that we've heard from the community is that the community loves Yountville and they want to preserve the qualities that make this place special. And that's special in terms of the Napa Valley and the other communities that are here. And so this means that we'll be retaining the core of the 1992 general plan and we're really not looking to make a lot of significant changes, although we are pushing the community to explore and consider opportunities for the future because that's what this whole process is about. And our goal today is to hear from you. We want to know if we're on the right track with what you hear today and whether you think we've missed anything major or important to you. And the reason that that is important is that our next stop is at the April Community Workshop and then we jump right into drafting the general plan. And while we're going to have lots of meetings and lots of opportunities for feedback to modify and edit the general plan, we really want to start off with a strong draft that considers the community and the council input. So, let's start with what is a general plan? And all cities and counties in the state of California are required to adopt a general plan and that is a comprehensive, long-term document. It's comprehensive in that it's supposed to touch on all elements of a community. We're looking at noise and open space, conservation and land use, and we'll go more into all those elements later. And it's also a long-term document. We're looking at 10 to 20 years. And 20 years is not so unusual for a community like Yountville that is substantially built out and we're just not a growing community. We do know that our general plan is going on 28 years old, so it's definitely ripe for an update. And this is the document that represents a community's view for the future. It's the vision and it's often referred to as a blueprint for growth and development. It's really guiding that future growth and development. And in the general plan we'll have goals and policies and these will be used by the decision-makers as a basis for land use decisions in the future. And those are private land use developments, they're for town projects and the CIP projects as well. So there's definitely a link with the general plan between the values and vision of the community and the decisions that will help shape its future. So why is the general plan important to Yountville? And I will share that during this process I've heard from members of the community who ask, "Why are we doing this update? What will I get out of it?" And they've expressed that $750,000 is a lot of money. And I think the sentiment is even stronger in a community like Yountville that is substantially built out where it's just not growing and there's such limited opportunity. And what I share with people is that this is an opportunity to share your opinion on the future of Yountville. And it includes at least infill development and that's development of vacant land, that's potentially higher density on developed areas, and looking at other opportunities, as well as the state mandates on housing that are imposed on us to provide low-income housing and affordable housing. So this is really the community's chance to weigh in with their opinions as to the future of Yountville. The general plan really seeks to, strives to achieve this balance and it's due in part to the fact that it's a comprehensive and long-term document. So we're looking at being visionary as to what this community might come in terms of changing technology and just the way things change in life, as well as being practical. We want to be able to identify things that can actually be achieved under its term. We want the general plan to give clear direction as to what the goals, policies and programs are. But again, we want it to be flexible especially because it's a long-term document and it needs to sort of foresee what we're not being specific on at this point. It's intended to guide new development, but we also want to preserve the community character. And in Yountville, we want to maintain its fiscal sustainability along with protecting the quality of life. And this last item is something that has been one of the overarching themes that we've heard from the community, that finding this balance between a thriving tourist economy and the residents' quality of life is really important, that they both contribute to what makes this place special. So now I thought I would share a history of the four prior general plans and what was going on at the time and what their goals were. So 1966 was the first general plan. And it addressed the transition of the community from an agricultural settlement to a town that was anticipated to grow to 30,000 residents. And that number was off, but it did reflect trends in the state of California where communities in the Bay Area were growing, they were annexing land. You look at Silicon Valley, that's what was thought may occur up here at that point. This is also prior to the Napa County Ag Preserve being voted in in 1968. And that ag preserve cut off our ability to annex ag land and really set our boundaries and put this obligation of development within the boundaries. In 1975, many residents began to feel that the rural character of the town was eroding and there was a goal to conserve the small-town charm. And what we see is the first push to limit commercial development, or at least ensure that it's in keeping with the small-town character. In 1985, we see this continuing focus on limiting commercial development and also retaining the natural character of Hopper Creek and preserving open space. And at that time, half of the land in town was vineyard, orchard, or undeveloped, so there was a lot of potential at that time. Then in 92, and this is the current general plan, we see an emphasis in preserving the qualities of the oldest part of town. And that includes a regular street grid and lot-by-lot development rather than planned development, and to retaining the views toward the hills and the vineyards and extending this character to future development. And what we see are many of the residential neighborhoods came out of this plan. This is a slide of the map from the general plan and it identifies about 70 acres of land for future development. And what you see here are the first three are residential developments. We have Stags View Lane, we have Yountville Park, we have Rossington Square. We also had a number of large commercial development projects including the Bardessono Hotel, the Bellagio Inn and Spa, and Hotel Yountville. These were major new developments at the time and many of them were on land that was developed as vineyard or orchard. And what we see with this type of development is a reinforcement of the town's commitment to the ag preserve and the recognition that if the county is to be preserved in ag, that means that the land within the town is to accommodate the growth and development of the valley. There are two parcels that have not been developed under the 1992 general plan and they're shown here as the French Laundry Garden and the Catholic Church property. And both of these sites are housing element sites and they're included as opportunities to meet the town's RENA objectives, that is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation that is attributed to the town. And so it includes very low and low-income housing needs as well. The French Laundry Garden is own primary commercial and it's not likely to develop as housing. And certainly we've heard from Thomas Keller that he intends to develop it as a hotel. So this may develop differently than envisioned in the general plan and it'll be likely to develop in the next update. But the point is that we won't be able to count this as housing and we'll go more into housing in a little bit. So the other property is the Catholic Church property and this one is zoned mixed commercial. This property faces the constraint of the flood plain and in order to develop it would need a flood wall or raised pad elevations, all of which are pretty costly development costs. And so while it hasn't developed now, it is definitely an option in the future with an interested developer. So the goal with this 2018 general plan update is to identify opportunities in the same way the 1992 plan identified opportunities. And this is a chance for the community to explore all these options and to give feedback on what they do and they don't want to see in Yountville in the future. And I'm going to turn it over to Christine for the next few slides.
Good afternoon.
Oh, and sorry, before I do so, I wanted to indicate that we have a lot of information that we're going through today. I want you to feel free to jump in at any point if you have questions or want to provide comments. And as we move forward, I'll reiterate that as well.
If there are natural breaks in your presentation that we can ask if any of our public guests have a question or comment, just pause and let's do that.
Okay, good. Will do.
Okay, good afternoon, council members. So, wanted to start off with some overarching goals for the update of the general plan. First one is that we really want to create a concise and easy-to-read and attractive document. That's so that it's something that both community members will pick up and can understand it and can find what they're looking for, as well as a document that the town can really be proud of and that showcases what Yountville is and what Yountville desires to be over the next 20 or so years. We want to update the goals, policies and programs of the existing 1992 general plan. There's a lot of good things in that general plan. There's also two of the elements, the housing element and the circulation element, which were updated recently, just in 2015. So we're starting with the existing general plan and then we're modifying it and improving upon that plan and making it more relevant for 2018 and future years. We want to, as Sandra just mentioned, we want to address potential housing, infill and change areas. Then we also want to create a plan that expresses the values and the vision of the community and this really is most important. In addition to these goals, we want to be sure that our updated general plan is going to address state law requirements. And then we also want to be sure that we're including programs that are truly within the town's authority and that are actionable during the life of the general plan. So there are seven required elements of the general plan and I'll just kind of go through them all briefly. The first one is the land use element. And the land use element identifies land areas for housing, commercial buildings, agriculture, public facilities, open space and parks. And there's a land use map there. We identify the intensity of development that is allowed within each of the zoning districts. And the land use element is going to contain policies that shape the way the town looks and preserves the town's identity and character. There is the housing element. And the housing element identifies the needs for housing to accommodate a growing community and the land that is available to meet that need. It also contains strategies to provide housing affordable to all income levels. Then we have the circulation element. The circulation element identifies the circulation network that enables residents and employees and visitors to travel around Yountville by car or public transportation or by walking or bicycling. And then it contains policies that ensure a safe and efficient circulation network and also encourages more climate-friendly transportation choices. The fourth required element is the safety element. And that one identifies hazards and safety risks to the community, including earthquakes, flooding and fire. Those are the three highest-rated risks to Yountville in particular. It also contains policies that ensure that buildings are built to the highest safety standards, that reduce flooding and fire risks, and that prepare the community for emergencies. The next element that's required is the noise element. And the noise element is going to identify noises and noise sources and noise levels within the community, but the existing noise levels and what we're projecting noise levels will be after the general plan is implemented. And then we have the open space element. That's identifying open space that's available within the community and that will contain policies that preserve and maintain open space and parks and scenic views. The open space element, which is oftentimes combined with the conservation element. The conservation element identifies natural resources, species and habitat within the planning area, addresses air quality, water quality, climate change, and it contains policies that are going to preserve and protect those natural resources. So those are the seven required elements. The state also allows cities and towns to have what they call optional elements and these can really be anything. The elements that we've identified with the Town Advisory Group are these four elements. The first one is quality of life slash community and it really kind of is meant to get at that achieving the balance of the needs of the residents and preserving the community, the quality of life for those residents with the other competing needs of the town. The other elements are historic resources, arts and culture, and economic sustainability. And then throughout, we are identifying, or we'd like to identify, a sustainability theme because there's going to be a lot of policies and programs that are related to this issue of sustainability. And one way that we're thinking about approaching this is by using something like an icon, like a leaf icon, that identifies policies and programs that are going to be across a bunch of the different elements that are all linked by the sustainability theme.
So quick question, two questions actually.
Sure.
Light, if that has been discussed, in terms of night sky, things like that. It was an issue, I remember, the biggest challenge to that was when the golf course had very powerful lights set up in their driving range and there was excessive spillover in the community and there was a real backlash. I know some of our streets are very dark and some people like it that way, some people don't. So if that's an element that's been discussed or can be. The other one is water. Where water falls into all this? It's obviously been a higher profile lately, but that's again, something that seems like it's a fairly important element, whether it's required or not.
So the water is absolutely included and it's included in, generally, most of the policies are going to be in conservation, so we're going to have policies and programs about maintaining an adequate water supply, maintaining a high-quality water supply as well. There are policies and programs about runoff and stormwater prevention and ensuring that the health and the quality of the water is preserved. As far as light goes, as I recall, it is addressed in some of the land use policies in regard to development. Now, I don't think we have anything about dark skies policies and if that's something that the council would want to address, we could look at including something about dark skies as well, so to ensure that spillover is also not directed upwards.
Well, if we are looking at things like higher-than-30-feet construction in certain areas, that may come into play. And so I think it's something that we need to be paying attention to. And the only thing about the water is it's beyond just conservation. It's municipal source, it's looking at other alternatives going forward if we need to, whether it be well water or other things other than our existing reliance on Rector Reservoir.
Okay, absolutely.
If I could, part of the water supply issue, Mayor Council, is addressed under the jurisdiction of LAFCO and our Municipal Service Review. So that currently is something that we're participating in and as the council knows, we're evaluating options. So I think we'll make sure that we take a good look at the conservation element and include appropriate programs. Sandra and I are both noodling. There is some reference to dark sky back in 1992 and it probably does need to be updated and reflected and we'll make sure that that gets included as well.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes. I wanted to find out, is the Climate Action Plan that we adopted part of the sustainability theme and that's what's going to be called out with the leaves? I see.
That's right. And what we want to do is fold a lot of those policies and the measures in the Climate Action Plan into, we want to fold them into the draft general plan. Some of them are very specific and are really better suited to remain just in the Climate Action Plan, but we are including programs or policies and programs that say to implement the Climate Action Plan and to update the Climate Action Plan every five years or is necessary and to ensure that development also follows the measures within, new development follows the measures within the Climate Actions Plan. So we are incorporating the Climate Action Plan into the draft, both through reference to the Climate Action Plan and specifically including measures. And those will be identified with the icon in addition to other policies and programs that are also related to sustainability. Thank you.
I would just follow up with the Climate Action Plan. Apparently, at least at the county level, there's been challenge even to an adopted plan with claims that they did not adequately study impacts of tourism as part of the Climate Action Plan. And that's happening outside of Napa County. I think Sonoma County also is dealing with that, so we just need to be aware of that, that if we are counting on our Climate Action Plan to be a source of information, let's just make sure that that doesn't get challenged going forward.
I think that's a good footnote, Mayor, but I also think the challenge that's being talked about in the county is slightly different because they're applying the agricultural standards and then the ecotourism. The good news, and I'll let Christine chime in, ours, I think because of the nature of our business and our structure, we don't have the same issues because, you know, we have the built-in inventory, the street condition, the commercial space, and we're programming those uses, so those have been more identified. But I do think, you are correct, there are some groups that are saying, and it applies here in the county because they're now allowing expanded use, increased visitors, under what was been approved by, under the agricultural zoning that could allow a winery production. So you're right. But I think for us, given the nature of our development and our current planning and the nature of our Climate Action Plan, we don't have the same exposure that you've identified there.
I would also say that the way in which the town's greenhouse gas inventory was developed and that's folded into the Climate Action Plan is done according to the U.S. Community Protocol and the guidelines from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. One of the things that, where like Sonoma County, and I'm not sure, I haven't looked to research the Napa County challenge, but I know the Sonoma County challenge, one of the grounds that it's been challenged on is that they're not including what we call upstream emissions. And so that would be air travel from people who are traveling to Sonoma County in order to visit wineries, as well as emissions that are created from trucking to truck the products of the wine industry to other areas in the country or even across the world. And that's not what is included in the, that's not how the protocol addresses emissions. So that's just kind of a separate issue. And the other thing is that the town did not adopt their climate action, your Climate Action Plan as a qualified greenhouse gas reduction strategy, which means that you're not using it in order to streamline development, so that you could say that a development is consistent with the Climate Action Plan and therefore doesn't need to analyze its greenhouse gas emissions under CEQA. There is an exemption for CEQA. And if you're not doing that, you're still making the new development analyze their own greenhouse gas emissions reductions. There's a, that's a higher bar for a Climate Action Plan to reach. And I'm not sure, but I suspect that maybe Napa or Sonoma County's Climate Action Plan was meant to be that kind of a qualified greenhouse gas reduction strategy and it has a higher bar to meet.
Thank you.
So, if there are no other questions, I'll continue on. I wanted to talk now a little bit about the Town Advisory Group. We have been meeting with the Town Advisory Group since July and we accomplished a tremendous amount of work with them. First of all, we reviewed a bunch, a lot of background information. We looked at the workbook. We also reviewed existing conditions reports that were prepared by the environmental consultant and those were on a wide variety of topics. We then reviewed each of the existing elements from the 1992 general plan and we generally would look at one or two elements a meeting. One of the land use element actually took three meetings because we were looking at a lot of different development potential. We also discussed the existing trends and explored future options for all of those elements. And for each one, we started with, again, the existing goals and policies and programs from the 1992 general plan. That's where that matrix that we had provided you at the February study session kind of came from. That was just looking at the land use one, but we prepared that matrix for all of the elements. And that's because we wanted to make sure that we looked at all of the existing policies and programs and kind of reviewed them to say, "What should we keep? What do we need to modify? What should we get rid of because it's no longer relevant or it's actually already been implemented or things have just changed and we need to look at a different policy or program." So we went through that exercise for all of the elements. We also drafted a vision statement, which I'm going to talk about in a little depth in the next slide. And then we had, we actually had eight tag meetings. We met monthly with the tag to go through all of the elements. And we've hosted two community workshops at this point. The first workshop was to identify issues of community concern and help to begin to set priorities for what we should do with the general plan. And then the second one, we really looked more in-depth at land use options, which were a lot of the options that we discussed at the February meeting with you. So that was actually the second workshop that we had. So let's talk a little bit about the Tag Vision Statement. Early on in the process, when we met with the tag, we looked at the vision statement that had been adopted by the council for the strategic plan. We kind of started with that because we wanted to make sure that we were incorporating a lot of those elements. And then we got feedback from the tag and we went and staff went to draft a vision statement, which we brought back to the tag at the second meeting. And at that meeting, the tag said that they felt that the vision statement had been written by somebody who did not live in Yountville, guilty as charged, and that they really wanted to kind of take it on and make it theirs. So they, I appointed a subcommittee of the tag who met over many months and drafted the vision statement. They had competing vision statements that were drafted by other members and then they kind of got together to hammer out the final vision statement. Just wanted to give you all of that background so that you understand how much work has gone into this vision statement and how the tag really has taken ownership of it and believes that this reflects their vision for Yountville. It's been very lightly edited by staff. I think just the first sentence was edited, but I wanted to acknowledge that as well. And I'd like to read this to you. "Yountville is a unique community. We are comprised of long-term residents, veterans' home residents, part-time residents who enjoy Yountville as a second home, and visitors, many of whom may aspire to one day call Yountville their home. We are proud of our town and are enthusiastic in welcoming visitors. In many ways, we are a study in contrasts. We have a vibrant tourist-based economy, yet we are a local community that is both involved with..." with and in love with our town. Our geography is small, yet Yountville is mighty in recognition as a world-renowned destination. We are committed to protecting our scenic environment and to enjoying our parks and open spaces, yet we are a developing community. We embrace the future while respecting our agricultural heritage and are committed to sustainable environmental practices." I think there's a lot of really interesting things about this vision statement. One is that it doesn't actually touch on all of those elements that I just talked to you about, like what is included in a general plan. It's not talking about affordable housing, it doesn't touch on parking, like parking or circulation, parking modes of transportation. It doesn't even really talk about, much about community design or safety issues. So in one way, it's not just a vision statement, but it's also setting some of the priorities and, and talking about what's important, most important, to the town and to the tag. And there are some things about this vision statement that are quite noticeable. It's very community-based, it's also inclusive, it's inclusive of the, not only the existing residents, but the second homeowners, the, the veterans home residents, as well as the visitors. And the importance of preserving and maintaining, enhancing the scenic environment, the parks, the open space, the agricultural routes, also the historic resources comes through, I think, really loud and clear. There's acknowledgement that the town is still developing, although it doesn't really address how, anything specific about what that development is or where it is, and there's also a very strong commitment to sustainability. Yes, Marita?
I notice, and I, I find it interesting that they mention the visitors, but not the businesses in the, in the vision statement and, and in everything that's outlined below it, and I, I find that sort of a strange note because the visitors wouldn't come if we didn't have the businesses that we have. That's just an observation.
And, and I will note that there's another vision statement, which does talk a little bit about the businesses that I'm going to, to read next. And if I may, and then I, we'd love to get your, your feedback on both of these. Now, the other one is kind of, it's not, it's not going to be called the vision statement, and the idea about this one is that, and the feedback that some of the members said was that this was kind of flowery and poetic, and the idea here is that this would be in the front of the general plan, and it's also kind of a description of Yountville now. So it's, well, let me read it to you, and then we can talk about it. So this says, "Nestled in the heart of Napa Valley, Yountville is a picturesque, small town with historic buildings, charming neighborhoods, and a welcoming atmosphere. Our world-class restaurants, elegant tasting rooms, and beautiful hotels have made this a premier destination for visitors from around the world. For us, this special corner of the world is more than a destination, it is our home, a home to a wonderfully diverse group of talented and interesting people of all ages, interests, and professions. The natural beauty of the surrounding hills and vineyards and morning skies dotted with colorful hot air balloons serve to create an exquisite backdrop for a casual walk through town, a walk often interrupted by frequent stops to chat with friends, veterans, and visitors from around the globe. This is a safe place with quiet streets, quaint shops, delightful art, and beautiful communities, community parks that honor America's veterans, host playgrounds, music, movies, and provide recreational and sports facilities for all ages. We feel privileged to live in a town where every resident is valued and every voice is heard. Residents, town officials, and local businesses are passionately dedicated to embracing the innovation of the future while supporting a sustainable, vibrant economy and continuing to maintain our small-town charm." So we're really, so this is really meant to be considered in context with the first vision statement as well. So I think maybe that's a good break to ask for feedback from, from the council on the vision statement and anything else that I've already, I've just reviewed.
So, council, have any comments about these two, the statement and the narrative? One thing I just, that jumped out at me in the very first statement, we are comprised of long-term residents. We have a, we have a blend of, I don't know, first of all, I don't know what long-term means, is that five years, 10 years, 20 years? And we have residents that have been here for just a few years that are, every bit of a resident is someone that's been here for 30 years, so I would just caution that term specifically. I just would want to hear, was there a discussion about that specifically? Also, I know we have some members of tag that could address that, or just going forward, something for you to analyze maybe?
Okay, thank you.
I'm really delighted to read that they feel that every resident is valued and every voice is heard. That means a lot, really.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it-
Hold on just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Has the tag voted on both of these?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know where we were in the process.
They did, and they also, there was some community input as well. There were some members of the community that, that had spoken up at some of the, several at the meeting, so they even talked about the, you know, the, the order of the bullets. I mean, they've, they've talked about this at length.
And I think you mentioned a, I think you said, another vision statement? Is that the narrative?
That's the narrative.
So that's how those two got fit together to make a whole?
Right, to make kind of a whole, exactly.
Thank you.
I guess I also though wonder, since so many residents really want more local serving businesses, the only businesses called out in this are the ones that they don't want any more of, you know? We don't want any more restaurants, we don't want any more hotels, and we certainly don't want any more tasting rooms. So, I don't know, is it something that they discussed, or did it not come up in the discussion?
I think, this is one of our ongoing dialogues, and if you actually go back and read the '92 and the '85, we've, we've been challenged on whatever the term local serving business is going back. I think you'll see in the one, in the vision narrative, they refer to quaint shops, and I, I think, you know, that's that dichotomy when we talk about our balance. You know, at one period of time, 15, 16 years ago, it was, we had too many arch, you know, galleries, and, and I do think, having been a participant and, and watching the tag, they spent a lot of quality time digesting, trying to come up with, and again, this is their, their words, this is what they've, they've put together with some encouragement from staff, but it's their product, and I think we feel that the, the two work well together. One is more vision statement-like, but I all, well, I want to bring you back to a comment that, that Sandra said earlier. One of the overarching themes that we've heard, when you talk about where do we start with and where are we going, the expectations, we're not going very far, because people generally like, we've got some evolving to do to reflect technology and trends, but Yountville's principally built out. Most people want us to generally keep Yountville the way it is, plus or minus the one or two things they really like. I mean, that's generally, to cut to the chase, that's how most people have responded to this. You know, some people think there's a parking problem, most don't. Some people are really protective of X, some are more concerned about Y, but for the most part, it's about maintaining whatever it's we've done at this point. And that's why I think, you know, from a staff perspective, I want to say, we're really pleased and challenged by the council's reaction, and we're kind of excited and realize we need to reset the stage, and I think you'll see this PowerPoint does that, and probably it will bring into perspective some of the feedback you've already given us, but I do think it's really important, and, and these two statements are really important to understand that really, while they're powerful in their own as a statement, they are a guiding principle that kind of explains how the evolution and what's presented in the, the upcoming general plan draft will be created.
Okay.
All right. So now we are going to move on and discuss how the general plan can achieve the vision that we've just heard in, in these statements, and we're presenting a traditional SWOT analysis to help guide this process, and what we've identified in this analysis are really the big picture issues that are guiding this process, and it's really a broad overview rather than getting into a lot of the specifics of how we achieve it, at least whether that's three stories or what percentage FAR we're looking at. It's really, it's really big picture stuff, and all of what we hear here, it's helping inform how we draft those goals, policies, and programs that will be in the draft. And so we're looking at how will, will Yountville capitalize on its strengths, address its weaknesses, take advantage of its opportunities, and counter its threats. And what you'll see in the next slides are the input that we've gathered at all of these presentations, workshops, and meetings, and it started back during the speaker series when we began to get an idea of how people felt about some of the big issues, was later explored at the two community workshops. It's really been delved into by the tag at their eight meetings, and we've presented it on, land use issues on two occasions to the Zoning and Design Review Board, and we've presented open space and conservation issues to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. This is the second of two study sessions, and there are many more meetings to come. So we are going to take this a little out of order because we want to end with opportunities, and we'll start here with the strengths. And what we've heard is that this community really values the friendly people, and that's friends and neighbors, but it also has an impact on the tourism economy. We've heard from individuals in the chamber that they get feedback that guests of this community like to stop and talk to locals, and so that is a, a nice quality. People really value the small-town charm, and this small-town charm has been retained in the face of a tourism economy, which is really special. Residents like the walkability of this town, and what you see here, and you'll see sort of scattered through these slides, are statistical information in the parentheses, and this is information polled from either the August or November workshop in the click poll results, so it's, so we were able to determine the number of people. And walkability was a top response as to what makes this, contributes to the unique character of this community. Scenic beauty is another item we've heard over and over again, it's the views of the vineyards and the hills. It's also the soft edge that the Napa County Ag Preserve gives around the town limits, but in the amount of landscaping and soft buffer that's been required for development within the town. And again, this is a top response as to why it makes Yountville a desirable place. We hear that historic buildings are worth preserving, and the 50 respondents to this next question rated the quality of life here in Yountville as good to excellent, and that's something that we want to preserve. One of the strengths are that this is a world-renowned destination for lodging and restaurants and wine, and because of the strength of this tourism economy, we have a very financially stable local government, we're able to have very well-maintained town parks, facilities, and services, and really rich Parks and Rec programming. We also see, see strong arts and culture programs, and the community views Yountville as both a safe community and a quiet community. So, we look, how will the general plan capitalize on these strengths? And this is where we look at maintaining what's already good about this community and not changing very much, so we want to maintain the small-town charm and the scenic beauty to preserve and protect the Napa County Ag Preserve surrounding the town and to protect historical resources. It's looking at this issue of balance when we look at the tourism industry, and how do we encourage and support and, you know, grow that tourism economy in a, in a smart way while preserving the livability of the town for the residents. It's maintaining the parks and recreational facilities, improving pedestrian facilities, and to promote arts and culture. So, these are the strengths, and I suppose this is a, a good natural stopping point if you'd like to discuss or provide feedback, or I can just keep moving.
Any quick thoughts, yes, Carrie?
Thank you. I would just like to thank all of you guys at that table. This is really, really helpful, and it's, I personally am getting very excited about the process now. The vision statement, the narrative is very helpful, and, and I really, really appreciate you taking the step back with us. Thanks.
Anything else from the council? Public? You still out there? Anything? Okay. You're busy tweeting? Okay. Okay, weaknesses?
All right, so now let's move on to the weaknesses, and many of these center around housing. It's the, the high cost of housing and the lack of affordability. It's a shortage of workforce housing, and that leads to a shortage of local employees. And again, this was a top concern of respondents at the August workshop. We see concern with the heavy reliance on tourism and transient occupancy tax, and that bleeds into an over-representation potentially of restaurants, wine tasting rooms, and lodging businesses. And input we received at one of the workshops is that many residents would like to see a cap or some other limit imposed on new tasting rooms. That was of the three categories of restaurant, wine tasting room, or lodging, what the, where the community thought we could regulate more strongly. However, when this item was brought to the tag, they were in favor of sticking with a more market-driven approach, believing that would lead to a richer economy and a more interesting and successful economy, so that too is informing some of these policies and programs. Another one, jumping back up, is this idea of the lack of serving retail and service uses that is directly related to the tourist economy and the market share in the town, and residents would like to see more non-wine, retail, personal service, and office uses. So we're going to see how we can capitalize on, on that.
Sandra, were there any offers of suggestion related to certain incentives that would be legal and appropriate to offer business outside of those particular industries?
Yes, we see, one way to address these weaknesses is potentially to allow a higher FAR in certain circumstances for a diversity of retail that's non-wine or food-related. Can be a little hard to regulate, but it offers an opportunity to bring in something different and that can serve more of the needs of the community. So we see here too that there, because of the, the vibrancy of the commercial district, that sometimes there is this friction between commercial and residential interest, that's based on proximity. We're looking at things like noise and parking and how residents are impacted. And so how will the general plan address these weaknesses? When we talk about housing, we're looking at policies that encourage the provision of affordable and workforce housing, that discourage the demolition or conversion of existing housing unless it's replaced. When it comes to the balance issue, we're looking at restricting certain uses on commercial land that abuts commercial areas, and we're proposing policies that address businesses that generate intrusive outdoor noise and odor and parking and other impacts that can't be mitigated. We're providing opportunities for a diverse mix of businesses, but we're sticking with this idea that it may be best for the market to decide based on our, the feedback we've had, and we're suggesting some ideas to provide, like I just mentioned, an FAR bonus for retail, office, or service uses that increase diversity and offer benefit to residents that are something other than, than food and wine. And we would set some parameters around what that means and how the community can get, grow beyond the tourist economy, and it's also about maintaining good neighbor When we look at the threats, something that rose to the top was really the proliferation of second homes, and this is a concern not just for the erosion of the neighborhoods because long-term residents aren't living there, but also the opportunity for second homes to become illegal vacation rentals, and we heard at the November workshop that the majority of respondents support the prohibition on short-term rentals, and that's because bringing lodging and tourist uses into the communities introduces impacts such as noise and parking impacts and trash, things that are better suited for commercial areas. Another threat is the state housing.
Hang on, if I could, I, the second homeownership, additional research has also shown that the second homeownership has an impact in the business community as well, because when we talk about the reliance on tourism, when you take away a third of the normal people, and I'm, normal's the wrong word, so I apologize for saying that, but when you think about a population that might go buy something Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and they're not here, it has a big impact on the nature of the types of businesses that will open- that will open because you need a certain number of visitors, shoppers, buyers. So, we're seeing that. And I think in my conversations with some of the, I'll call them more traditional, non-food, non-wine, they don't see enough consumers, and therefore, it's not practical for them to pay the prevailing market rate. So, I just want to say that the second homeownership issue does have a trickle-down effect big time in terms of the types of businesses and the potential success for those businesses.
Jeff, did you have something? So, to that point, before you go on, what I think is critical is that we're looking toward the future, not the past, in terms of behavior patterns. I think there's no question that generations that are coming up are shopping differently, they're traveling, driving differently. So, for us to be looking at this in a rear-view mirror is dangerous. And I think we need to be looking at this going forward, that some people maybe aren't looking to buy three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath houses anymore. Should we be looking at encouraging future infill or housing development that is smaller, more rentable, things like that? The trends that we're seeing regionally and nationally, not just what we have been doing in the past.
Correct. And I'd also say, when we're talking about current threats, so when we talk about the applicability, but I would also say, the good news for Yountville is that we have a smaller development footprint than average, to your point, Mayor, so a lot of our development. But I also think you're, one of our, and it kind of falls in on the same threat, we don't have commercial and retail and office space vacancy. One of our challenges slash threat is, in order to have more, we actually have to have more of that space. We have some neighboring communities where retail vacancy, commercial vacancy exists. So, that's another one of ours, is if we were to try to improve the amount of commercial office space, we actually have to figure out a way to generate it. Because it, you know, we're currently, all that we have built is full. It's rented. We don't have vacancies. So, that ties in just in another way. But I hear what you're saying in terms of, the conversation here is talking about the issues. And to your point, the policies that come out of the next general plan do need to look forward, recognizing that shopping patterns, trends, I mean, we've said it, it's not new. So, there's people that really, really wish that a pharmacy will come to town. We're not going to have a CVS or a Rite Aid pharmacy. We do not meet the criteria and the numbers. So, it's just certain things are not likely to happen in Yountville.
Councilwoman Mueller?
So, going back to the weaknesses page, the, what Town Manager is now talking about, this FAR bonus for retail, office, and service uses. We have no, currently, we have no example where we have increased FAR for any one of these types. Is that correct?
We do for office and residential in association with commercial development. This would take it a step further to try to bring in a broader category that might address more of the service and non-wine retail needs.
So, service would be like a hair salon or something like that?
Dental office, yeah.
And retail, we thinking about more quaint shops?
Well, what I would say is, we're talking, the simple way to describe it right now is non-food, non-wine retail. And we may need, you know, this would be a further evolution as the council develops those policies, we can be more specific. But to your point, we've had some success with our mixed-use development with the FAR bonus generally around residential because the Somersden Priest Ranch development includes an apartment, the Heston development includes an apartment. So, they have, when presented, a number of our developments have looked at the FAR bonus, the North Block Hotel development in terms of apartments. So, I think what staff is proposing here is a broader one, and we need to develop and fine-tune what those conditions might be in order for a potential development to meet that.
So, maybe we should include in this one item to readdress new residential in conjunction with retail, office, and service uses. Just to make that perfectly clear, that that's, if we give you a FAR bonus for these, we're going to get that back. Okay?
Good.
So, the concern I have about giving specialized FAR bonuses is, if you have a pet store that moves into a space and they go out of business, and then you risk having a vacancy if you don't find a very specific business to fill back in, if you're excluding other businesses from being able to exist in that bonus space. Do we have an answer as to how that would be addressed?
No, and that is a risk.
What I would say also, though, is I think it can be mitigated by the fact that the definition, in other words, on a conditional use permit with an FAR bonus, non-food, non-wine retail is a lot of things. It doesn't necessarily mean that if a, I'll say, a pet shop went in and then a pet shop went out, that it has to be replaced by a pet shop. It would just be that it would have to be replaced by another non-food, non-wine retail. So, we do want to try to make sure we have, you know, when we craft those policies, that they're clearly understood. And it's not necessarily, when I would say like-for-like by nature of the business, but like-for-like by nature of the definition of the type of business.
Not too specific to be too restrictive, long-term.
And we are looking at factors that are out of our control, such as the rent that a landlord would charge on a space. And we know that with the wine and the food industry, that they've been able to keep that very high, and that it squeezes out the other kind of businesses. If they are required to do those, to offer their space to someone other than food and wine, it may offer that opportunity. It's really something we're exploring because...
And actually, I just want to remind the council, we've actually taken our first dabble in this because with the approval of the handwritten wines development, if you remember, we actually have a provision in there that has their, they have the standalone retail space, and we have the requirement that it cannot be food or wine retail. So, if you think about this, we've already sort of been nibbling at this. And I think this would be, you know, in order to get these types of FARs, development has to come in and commit to that, or they don't get it. And that's really how an FAR bonus works. You're entitled to X, and you can get X plus Y if you do these other things that the community has value for.
So, I'm going to go back to the threats. And the second one on this list are, is the pressure of the state housing mandates for new and affordable housing. And the state is becoming more involved in our business. We know that we recently had to change our accessory dwelling unit or granny ordinance to loosen the standards for those types of units. We know that the state reviews and certifies our housing element, that they hold us to the regional housing needs allocation, and we have to prove to them how we meet that. So, we're seeing a lot of pressure from the state. We see an aging of the population in Yountville, and that has a potential impact on Yountville Elementary School in the future. Many of the residents that attended the workshops or the people that were attending those are concerned with the fear of overdevelopment that's inconsistent with the Yountville aesthetic. So, if we are considering FAR bonuses for certain uses, at the same time, we have to consider how that can fit the Yountville fabric and how we're not going to see something from a more suburban standard or vanilla-watch community. How do we maintain that uniqueness? And then, we're looking at natural hazards and climate change risks. And so, how will the general plan counter these threats?
Before you leave this page?
Yes.
I'm not comfortable with the negative connotation of uncertainty for future of Yountville Elementary School. I think that's perpetuating a negative connotation of the status of the school, which, in my opinion, is not accurate. Future of Yountville Elementary School is fine. Uncertainty of the future, I'm not okay with.
Any other comments before moving on?
Nope, thanks.
Okay. All right. So, how will the general plan counter these threats? We will continue to restrict short-term rentals and ensure adequate and appropriate sites for affordable housing. I've mentioned that we can look at revising the design standards to ensure that development is consistent with the Yountville aesthetic. And we'll be looking at the scale, the height, the massing to ensure that that is the case. Yes?
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Well, with the auxiliary units and building up, for example, allowing taller garages so that they can accommodate someone to live upstairs, that massing in our small lots concerns me very much because if I were to, if the people behind me on Mulberry Street were to do that, and I had to just look now at a big building, you know, that would, that would change the aesthetic, I believe.
That is, yes, I agree. And that is an issue that came up when we were considering the revised ADU standards. And we know that we can't prohibit a second dwelling above an existing garage that's just five feet from site in our property lines, and that's inconsistent with our setbacks. But we included a provision in that ordinance that set a maximum height of the structure that was much lower than the traditional two-story structure in the neighborhood. So, it was a way to bring down the plate height as it relates to the adjoining building and to be lower. But yes, I acknowledge that we're losing some of that ability to prohibit.
That's state law.
Well, I was going to say, right. And I want to bring the Vice Mayor and the council, this is a really critical one that we all need to understand. We talked earlier about one of those threats. The threat is the erosion of local control. The state is mandating certain things. And we hear loud and clear from a lot of the residents, and your fear and concern is very valid, and depending on lot size and things, if a certain thing comes forward, then we don't have discretionary approval. It needs to move administratively. And I think you're going to see, you know, the council will have its first appeal, and probably in our community, you're going to see several more. But that's the, you know, right now, one of the things that keeps many of us on this table awake at night is the current legislative pressure is actually even stronger, I want to stress, stronger, to take away local control and then leave us to clean up the mess that it makes in our communities. But right now, that's a real pressure in, you know, certain parts of the state government and legislature are looking at communities, larchires, and saying, you aren't meeting your housing. You're not, what are you doing? So, that keeps a lot of us up. And I think, you know, that's a real threat.
I have a comment on the threats too. The first one, continue to restrict short-term rentals. Can we expand this a little bit? I want to try to include how we're managing rental property in that program that we have in place. I'm not really sure of the wording, what I'm trying to say, but, you know, I think, and even though we're restricting short-term rentals, I think even our, some of our monthly rentals that are basically vacation rentals, you know, I see a lot of them, because the prices are high here, they bring in quite a few people in one of those houses, and there's cars all over the place, and, you know, I see trash set out on the street and stuff. So, just, maybe just by adding the word manage our rental properties gives us kind of an open edge to what we're currently doing and may want to do in the future. So, just a comment.
Yes, we can definitely add something like that. And you draw attention to some of the challenge that the TAG had when they were reviewing these policies. They were concerned about that 30-day rental. And we had discussion back and forth as to whether maybe short-term rentals should be restricted to a longer period, or even rentals themselves for 90 days. And we heard from the town attorney that that runs contrary to state landlord-tenant law, and so, we couldn't take a step such as that. But we did explore those issues. On the other hand, there are members of the TAG who thought, well, maybe we can better control short-term vacation rentals by permitting them and to attaching conditions. And then, that opens up an opportunity to perhaps better manage those. That didn't receive support, and so, we've sort of fallen back on restricting the short-term rentals. But I definitely accept what you're saying as to managing and some of the challenge that we have discussed in this process.
But they are...
Hold on a second. Councilor Dorban?
I'm sorry. Thank you. The second bullet, ensure adequate and appropriate sites for affordable housing. I know that we, as a community and we as a council and staff, are interested in affordable housing, but I don't know that we are insurers of that, given our unique circumstances. I mean, I'm just, I don't know what this is going to be used for. So, I just wonder, should we make that something that we intend to meet our state obligations? And if it's possible, go beyond or something like that?
This is really a nod to our state obligation. We need to prove to the state that we have adequate land zoned for affordable housing and for each of the four income categories for the RENA obligation. I don't believe ensure is a word in our policy. We were just trying to sort of distill the idea that we need to make sure that we're providing opportunity.
Vice Mayor?
We did approve the 90-day limitation on short-term rentals.
For new second dwelling units. So, any new second dwelling is a 90-day minimum. If it's existing, it's 30 days, and all other rentals are 30 days. So, yes, we did do that.
Okay.
All right. So, the last four items on this list are pulled from other elements, really the safety element, and it shows how the elements all work together. We will have policies to enforce the building code, to maintain public safety and emergency preparedness, to maintain the flood wall, and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, those touch on some of the threats and how other elements approach those. We now get to look at some of the opportunities. And like I said, because we're a developed community, there really aren't a lot of things that we're looking at. But we are looking at some vacant land, one of which was the North Agricultural Parcel we presented to you last month. Another are the vacant Humboldt Properties that are zoned residential. Another opportunity is really to look at the development standards. We've come up with many different suggestions for the downtown, some of which we explored last time, but some of which we'll explore more at public workshops, looking at the six parcels on North Washington, perhaps opportunities for Vista condominiums, ways to leverage our revenue and resources, and how to work with our community partners. And as we go to this next slide, as to how could the general plan take advantage of these opportunities, I note that this is where we started at the last workshop. We jumped straight to Slide 24 when we really needed to share some of the other information with you. You've seen all the items on this voted list.
Hey, I'm sorry. Before you keep going, I'm stuck on the previous slide about Vista condominiums. Why has Vista been singled out when something like the Yountville Crossroads is also a condominium complex that has a series of single-story? I'm assuming you're talking about going up to potentially two stories in some of the...
Yes, yes.
So, specific to Vista? Or is it single-story neighborhoods that could become two-story neighborhoods?
We really looked at Vista condominiums because the whole neighborhood was one-story. And in going back and forth at the workshops and the TAG meetings, the consensus support was not that the whole neighborhood converted to two-story, but there's this balance. When we look at the other condominium neighborhoods, we think there is already a balance of one and two stories. However, it is something that can be looked at moving forward.
So, and that makes complete sense to me. Then, it might get a little bit more vetted by limiting potential second-story development to the inner part of that neighborhood versus the exterior part. If you've already gone there, that's great.
That is where...
That protecting views, your corridor...
Yeah, you didn't see the, there's a little bit more to that that you haven't seen.
As long as it's been addressed.
We may have not gotten to this one last time.
You didn't, you didn't. That's why I'm saying, to your point...
It's fine. If it's been addressed, that's fine. We're good.
So, the idea was that we wanted to preserve one story on the north edge where it backs up to Washington Park because those are low-one-story buildings, and the massing could be overwhelming. To maintain the one story at the edge of town and the vineyards to preserve views, but to allow second story on the interior ring where it's adjacent to the Adventist home and where it suits the massing a little better. So, that's what came out of that. This will be an idea, along with all of these others, that's presented at the workshop next month, based on feedback that we received from you. We've hired an illustrator that's going to share ideas on many of these, not all of them. But just quickly running through the list, we'll be looking at that North Agricultural Parcel and its opportunity to provide affordable housing to meet our RENA mandates in the future, to redesignate those two Humboldt Properties. to redesignate those two Humboldt properties for commercial use, and then to look at the six North Washington parcels. And this is to encourage a mix of uses or live-work units to get something other than what we see represented in our commercial district now.
And just to, you mentioned the Toianterrance neighborhood. Staff analysis has indicated that the existing 50% rule and the existing FAR on the property does give a lot of those property owners significant latitude with which to expand those homes in our existing policies.
Follow-up question about some of the neighborhoods that have homeowners associations. Do we run into unique challenges there? Do they have to just comply with what policies we set as a town? How does that work?
I've discussed this with the town attorney, and there are sort of two layers of regulation. The town can go in and apply new rules to the neighborhood. And then the neighborhood homeowners association or CCNRs, they'd have to address it in some way to see whether they internally agree to those. What we know with Vista condominiums is each of the units has an equal share of representation that could be, and that's by unit. It may be the same if some units were able to go two stories. That's really something for them to sort out. And it'll be something that they would address should this get approved.
And just a footnote, just because the town allows it, at some point, the HOA would have to modify their CCNRs internally in order to take advantage of what the town might allow.
I have one more question about the Vista condos. So you've addressed the outer area that faces the vineyard, and you've addressed the inner circle. But there are two parallel areas that face, I guess they can consider, they face Fennel or Washington Park. What would?
Both of those would be one-story as well.
Even though, like in Washington Park, they back up against the 50-50 rule?
The whole row of houses in Washington Park is one-story there. And the idea was to preserve a view corridor.
Oh, they're all one-story, okay.
All one-story.
I hadn't noticed that. Okay, thanks.
So the inner circle is truly just the, on the inside. Everything that faces another neighborhood or the town limits, the recommendation is to keep as one-story. I think this next one is really important. It's something we'll explore more at the workshop. It's this idea of revising the development standards for FAR in the downtown area to increase business diversity and offer benefit to residents. We're also exploring, and we just failed to include it here, is this idea of doing second-story apartments or condos over retail to satisfy a different type of housing need, maybe satisfy a portion of that second homeowner desire for a place where you don't have to deal with trash and yards. So we will be exploring that. And we will have visuals that explain what a two-story development might look like with retail and residential above. And then also more of the Behind Whistlestop Center or Behind a Railway End, some of the ideas there to have higher diversity for these types of businesses. We've proposed a number of new design guidelines to better ensure that development is consistent with the Yountville aesthetic. And we've tried to give them words as to massing and height and consistency for the neighborhood. So we'll be pursuing those moving forward. Like I said, these are all ideas that we'll be taking to the community workshop. Unfortunately, this is where we started with you last week. But now you know a little bit more of the history of where we've been and where we're going. Oh, I have one more slide.
Can I ask a question on that last slide before you move? Can you go back the very first bullet on that slide and try to give me a definition of housing reserve that doesn't sound like a zoning change?
Yes. So housing reserve would apply, would apply to the property in this way. It would call out its potential future for housing. It would not change existing conditions. It would maintain existing conditions as vineyard. It would allow all of the allowed uses in the zoning ordinance to occur on that property for if they wanted a dwelling or if it included, I'd have to go and look at those specifically. I can't rattle them off. So they could continue to do what they're doing in any allowed use in the zoning ordinance. But the reserve, it sort of flags the property as being identified for future potential residential development if it's needed. It would require another step to go in and define what that is.
So it's equivalent to a study area in a LAFCO MSR?
Similar, but it is a zoning designation, land use designation.
Housing reserve is a land use designation?
Well, because we can make up whatever we want, that is why. So we call some areas primary commercials, other residential-scale commercial. We could apply this housing reserve just to a portion of the property. And housing reserve would allow the existing vineyard and permitted use or allowed uses. And so it's something that we get to define should the community want to go in this direction. It's an opportunity that we're throwing out there because we have so few opportunities to look at. And because we're going to have to address housing in 2023, but I'm going to, to turn to Christine. She's going to go all into the housing element. So I'll just give you sort of that introduction. That's truly all that is.
Okay, thanks.
So other opportunities here are, again, touching on other elements that development pays their fair share of costs, that we're able to get the infrastructure and public services, that we work with county and regional agencies to improve all of these items noted here, and to work with the Veterans Home. So this is a time, I would take a break before turning it back to Christine for the housing element, to see if you think we've missed anything as to the big ideas. And I know you've been providing feedback. We've been making notes on these items. So what are your thoughts?
Specific thoughts from the Council?
I have a question. So undertake advantage of the opportunities. It says, work with Veterans Home to encourage development of workforce housing. And how can we accomplish that, other than, you know, participating in the Little Hoover Commission and giving testimony? And what can we do? I mean, we don't have the jurisdiction.
I think the, the first thing, we're doing a lot of that already. And some of that we're doing behind the scenes with the Council's direction. A lot of that means that we continue to push and, and support with the administration regionally in a dialogue that calls for tying in. And the mayor has certainly been straightforward on that with the Council's support. Staff has been doing a lot. And I think that's why it's important that we're showing it here. Even though we do not have the direct jurisdictional control, we do have the ability to be an influencer. And I think the first thing that we have to do is say that we welcome this. We want this. We support it, and, and we're ready to help in whatever way that might be. Because when you look at where do we have potential land and where do we have resources? We have a lot of existing infrastructure that can support infill housing and other infill development. And if we are out of space, then maybe this is a way. And the Veterans Home master plan identifies potential for partnerships. It doesn't really go very far in how we get there. But I think we just need to, as the Council needs to continue to embrace, make public statements, encourage that as an effort that staff works on, we continue to have those dialogues. But you're right. At the end of the day, we cannot make the state go do something on the Veterans Home property that they don't choose to do.
I know that we have been asked by veterans to improve the pedestrian path that comes down from the Veterans Home. Are you saying by putting this in here that we are willing to contribute to the financial support of that?
No, I'm not. What I'm talking about is we can continue to do certain things. We have a pathway up to where our jurisdiction stops. So we have the responsibility to do that. We can encourage and work with it. Again, we have to be really careful in terms of where our jurisdictional control and ability. But again, this is reflecting, because we have the ability to sit down and say, this is what we're hearing. This is what we're doing. So to fund and build a path that's not in our jurisdiction from a land use control standpoint is very challenging. Maybe we're able to sit down and encourage broader development. And as a condition of that development, there may be support to encourage the construction of that or to look at. So I just want to be cautious. But it doesn't mean that we can't take up and identify and agree that it's something that should be worked on. And again, we have the responsibility to ensure that our paths all the way up to the gates of the Veterans Home are in a, in a manner that's acceptable to the Council.
So I have one more question. It's kind of back to the term, which is made up, so we have to still make that up, housing reserve and, and the Veterans Home. Now, as just discussed, if we add housing reserve to the North Ag parcel, we can't make them do that. So it's much like the Veterans Home. Is there a way that if we're going to write this definition, that we could use the word housing reserve as it relates to Veterans Home? Because we are talking about workforce housing and encouraging that? Can we put those two together? All right, Sandra wants to answer this. I saw that. Good job. I want to hear this.
When we are looking at the North Ag parcel, providing the zoning that would allow the development of future satisfies the state in meeting our RENA objective, looking here to this Veterans Home policy and having policies where the town encourages development up there is very valuable because we may be able to count what they're doing up there. And where it's not related to Veterans Home's core services, where they're not developing housing themselves and they're bringing in a private developer to do that housing, we will be able to issue the permits and count those units. So however we support them in achieving that mission, even though we're a step removed because we don't have land use authority up there, puts us in the same position, really, as we have over the North Ag parcel where we have land use authority.
So I would encourage, I was going to bring this up before this conversation started. I think this one sentence here under represents the value and the potential of the relationship with the Veterans Home as it relates specifically to housing. To get to slide 25 of 55 before we talk about this, I think is missing an opportunity. In all the conversations I've been having in Sacramento, they want to know, does the town support the idea of housing on that campus? And page 25, Bullet 3, to me, doesn't do justice to our partnership and our potential partnership with Calvet. So I would like to see this opportunity expanded in our, whether it's throughout the housing element, because this has significant repercussions with a lot of the things we just talked about in the first 24 slides. We don't have to worry about the second-story infill as much if we've got 200 to 300 units at the Veterans Home that count toward the next 20 years of our RENA numbers. So I would like to see us make a bolder statement saying, this is a priority for us as we envision the next 20 years for Yountville. Even though we don't control the land there, we can definitely increase our commitment to supporting their developing that land there.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly how or where in the other slides, but I just think this under represents that potential.
I think we can work at it. And again, I want, what I'll tell you is, don't take the fact that it's on page 25, Bullet 3, right now, as any indication of its priority in place. Because when we're putting together our various policies and statements, they're going to be in chapters and, and various different. So we can certainly work on it. The same way, we will be having a framework that talks about all of our Veterans Home-related policies in one place. So that may be an area where we can highlight. But we, and again, these are right now themes. And I hear what you guys are saying because we're trying to make sure. But this shows up also. We did a nice briefing with a tag group on all of the policies that reflect the Veterans Home. And kind of like the sustainability theme, they appear in multiple places. But we can have a summary that has everything related to the Veterans Home in one place. So it's easy for people to find and see, because it does affect a number of things.
I just want to finish how important this is to me to properly present this. To list it in the same sentence as improving pedestrian path, does it an injustice?
We can separate the two.
I think it's worth magnifying this opportunity as.
No, we hear, we hear what I'm saying. We'll separate the two. We put, remember, right now, we're giving you, this is an opportunity to present what we've heard from. So we're hearing from you. So we'll focus on the housing. We also need to continue to have the shared-use facilities and a variety of things. So we'll bifurcate, make sure that it's amplified.
Thank you.
And I have one, I don't know if it's the last comment or not, but additional comment. I just, first, would like to add emphasis to the mayor's comment, just in case you need more emphasis. And second, this might be kind of more down in the weeds or a little minutia. Maybe you would call it a program. But I would also like for us to consider, I'm always a little troubled that we have all these affordable units. And then, you know, once our expiration runs out, we lose them. We have to start all over. We don't have much land. Is there any way we can consider like a creative program, much like an affordable housing trust? And so how it would work, you could, somebody who has an affordable house now that, you know, after 30 or 40 years, whatever we have, you could almost like, you know, pay them, much like a reverse mortgage, for them to further deed-restrict their house that is now, you know, there might be some benefit, and I don't really know what the numbers are. But I, something creative that when we go through all this, finding the land and getting the affordable house, and then it disappears, you know, something creative to maybe address that, where it's going to be a lot cheaper than building more affordable housing. It'll be less stress on community services. Something creative that might be more programmatic.
There are housing element policies that are worth considering in the future. We're not trying to open up our housing element now because we don't want to send it back for recertification. But I've learned with my work through HCD, because I've questioned them on 27 Landy, where it was set to expire. It was a unit at risk. We purchased it. We sold it to Napa Valley Community Housing, and we've prolonged that term. There is an opportunity, provided you have the right housing element program, to count those as new units. So even though it's not a newly constructed unit, it could have been counted if we had a housing element policy that says that the town comes in and purchases those. It would obligate us to do that. But then it also requires that we bump the affordability level down by one, which we know in working with Napa Valley Community Housing, they want to have it in the moderate range to cover the note. But there are those opportunities in the future to count units that are existing and built but subject to expiration.
And that just may mean an increased financial contribution on our part initially to buy that down further. The other thing that the Council has encouraged and worked with us is, as you know, we've transitioned from home ownership to rental properties. And that has probably one of the more important transitions is that better fits the demographic need and gives us a little more latitude on control. But I think there's some opportunities for us to create some policies in both these areas.
Yes, Councilor Dorban.
Thank you. Is there enough, are there enough pieces of our plan that touch on the Veterans Home to make it its own element? I mean, we've added some things to the required.
We'll noodle on that. I do think we can present it as a summary of Veterans Home. That might be a, you know, something where we can put all of them together in one spot but keep them in their various elements. So there's a nice appendix or something that can be worked on that.
I think we'll jump to the Veterans Home policies now, and then we'll go back and do housing element.
And I think that this is where I come in. So the Veterans Home. So first of all, we want to acknowledge, of course, that the Veterans Home.
Could you identify what slide?
Slide 47.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Yes, slide 47. We jumped ahead because we are having such a great discussion about the Veterans Home. So the Veterans Home has been an important part of the Yountville community since 1884. There are a number of historic buildings, and it's a very scenic property. And also, a third of the Yountville's population is there at the Veterans Home, are veterans. There is a 2012 master plan, which has a number of new development or rehabilitated development that is envisioned in that plan. A new, that includes a new skilled facility, nursing facility, excuse me, increasing the beds from 1,120 to 1,500 beds for the veterans. And also, the construction of 129 new housing units for workforce and employee housing. So those, those units, as Sandra was just saying, could potentially be counted as housing units that address the town's RENA requirements if that did come to pass.
Question how you got to 129 housing units?
That's out of the draft 2012 plan. They may revise that plan, but that's out of the existing plan that they present.
That's the Vet's Home. That's the Vet's home.
The Veterans Home Plan.
So many.
Correct. That's their own plan.
That's far below what we said our potential is, but that's what they have designated.
That is correct.
Okay.
And again, we're using what they've provided. You and I have been in meetings, the mayor, where they've indicated they may be revisiting the 2012 plan and expanding certain areas. But again, we're just going off of, these comments are from the 20, we probably should clarify that, it's the 2012 Veterans Home Master Plan.
Yeah, thank you.
So there are a number of draft policies and programs in the general plan, and they are, they're sprinkled kind of over several of the elements. So we just wanted to kind of pull them all out in one place for you to take a look at. First of all, in the land use element, there is, we've drafted a policy about the Veterans Home Master Plan, and it says, "Work with the California Department of Veterans Affairs and the Veterans Home to support and assist in implementing the existing Veterans Home Master Plan and future amendments and revisions to the plan, including the provision of workforce housing at the Veterans Home campus to the extent allowable, given the town's lack of land use authority on state-owned lands."
And this would be the big picture idea that we think Mayor is emphasizing what you're talking about.
Yeah. So my only other follow-up right now is caution about only referencing workforce housing. That is a priority to the conversations now, but it also includes veteran housing. There is housing beyond workforce potential, so that may be more restrictive than we want to be. Housing just as a.
We can just do housing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Also, in the land use element, there are draft policies regarding the facilities at the Veterans Home. So the community facilities mentions the Veterans Home like this. It says, "Support facilities operated by public agencies such as Yountville Elementary School, the fire station, the library, the U.S. Post Office, and Veterans Home of California." And then there's another draft policy regarding shared services and joint use facilities. It says, "Support shared services and joint use facilities such as Fire Station 12, Library, Post Office, Yountville Elementary Field, and the community pool," which of course is a facility at the Veterans Home. So those two are in reference to the Veterans Home. Those are the policies in the land use element. In the open space and conservation elements, there is another draft policy regarding joint use agreements. It says, "Maintain existing and evaluate entering additional joint use agreements with the school district, the Veterans Home, and other community partners for community access to recreation and park facilities where appropriate," as well as a policy regarding rector reservoir. Maintain agreement with the California Department of Veterans Affairs for the long-term use of rector reservoir water. Of course, there are other policies within that conservation element regarding water supply and protection of the water. And then, in the circulation element, we've drafted two new programs. One regarding the pedestrian route to the Veterans Home, which says, "Review the pedestrian route between the Veterans Home entry and downtown Yountville to determine if any enhancements such as sidewalks, walkways, higher-visibility crosswalks, pedestrian warning signs at crosswalks, and traffic calming elements are needed to increase the safety for pedestrians." And then a policy, a program related to the master plan, that says, "Work with Veterans Home and the California Department of Veterans Affairs to support and assist in implementing circulation improvements identified in the existing master plan and in future amendments and revisions to the plan. Encourage the Veterans Home to improve the pedestrian path on California Drive." And then I think the last one that we have here, yes, is an existing program that's in the housing element now. And that says, "To work closely with the Veterans Home of Yountville, the California Department of Veterans Affairs, and other relevant parties to refine concepts for changes and upgrades to the Veterans Home facility as envisioned in the facilities' master plan." And then it goes on to describe what was envisioned in that 212 Veterans Home Master Plan, including the need for new and renovated facilities for the veterans' living facilities, as well as the provision of new onsite employee housing. So those are all of the policies and the programs that we've drafted that are in our draft general plan and the existing program that's in the housing element. And I think, as you can see, we've kind of tried to separate out, as you were recommending, the need for policies to address the circulation aspect of it, the pedestrian path, as well as the housing and the water supply, and the facilities, the shared use of facilities, of community facilities that are at the Veterans Home. So they are kind of across different elements, but as Steve was mentioning, I think it does make sense, maybe if it's not a separate element, but to at least have one page where we kind of talk about the Veterans Home, and then reference all of these policies and programs that appear throughout, throughout the general plan. Any other comments on, on any of those? I know there, you know, we have plenty of time to kind of noodle with the actual wording of it, but any other comments about the spirit of those?
I think we asked all our questions before you gave us the presentation on those items, so.
I know, we've already had this discussion.
We flip flopped it for you. So did you want to go back then to?
So I'll go back to the housing element then, if I may. Okay. And so this is slide 26, and now we're on slide 27. We wanted, what we wanted to do was, I know we talked about housing at the February council study session, and we also had this discussion with the tag, and we realized that we really do kind of need to go back and have a more detailed discussion of what the housing element is, what your housing element says, how it's providing for sites, for opportunity sites for affordable housing. Because this provides some really important context when we start talking about where we might want to put additional housing. So it really affects what we talk about, development at the North Ag Parcel, as well as additional housing that we can use in infill properties like in the downtown. So we want to kind of go back from the beginning on the housing element. And this is going to be a little detailed. The housing element, of course, is one of seven required elements. We've already talked about that. The housing element itself has been required since 1969. So it's been a long time the towns and cities have been kind of dealing with this. And over the time, over all of the, I think we're on the sixth, fifth, the fifth cycle of housing elements. And with each new cycle, the requirements for housing elements have just gotten more and more stringent. The housing element itself is reviewed and certified by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and it's the only element that goes through kind of its own special review and certification process. And by certification, what HCD does is that they look at it and they, they make a determination that your housing element is in compliance with state housing element law. Now, the housing element is updated every eight years. It used to be updated every five years, but as long as you kind of maintain the required approval cycle, you can stay on this eight-year cycle, which is, can be very helpful. The last housing element was completely revised and adopted in January of 2015. So it's valid through 2022. What that means is that in 20, the beginning of 2023, you're going to need to make, adopt a new housing element. So, and you're going to have to probably get started on that in the beginning of 2022. So we're talking about less than four years from now. You'll need to do, great news, you'll need to, to revise your housing element. Now, for that reason, we really didn't want to make too many changes to it. Before I get into that, the requirements of the housing element are very detailed, and there's pages and pages of the housing element law that spells all of this out. First of all, there needs to be an evaluation of the current housing element, and you kind of do that every year with your annual housing progress report, looking at each, each program and identifying what was accomplished and what wasn't accomplished. There is very detailed analysis of the demography and the housing needs. There is an analysis of the constraints on housing development. And then there's this thing called the site inventory. And this is a detailed parcel-by-parcel listing of all the sites that are available to meet the affordable housing need. And there are sites that have to be affordable to very, the lower-income categories, as well as sites for moderate and above moderate. The sites that are available to lower-income housing generally need to have higher density. And so for Yountville, they have to have density, you have to demonstrate that there can be residential density of 20 units or more to be, to meet the, what we call the default density. And then there also have to be programs to promote housing opportunities, and again, to meet this regional housing needs allocation. So just to kind of talk a little bit about what that regional housing allocation is, it's divided among these four income categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income. And so very low income is up to 50% of the median. Low income is 50 to 80% of the median. Moderate income is 80 to 120% of the median. And above moderate is over 120% of the median. This median number changes every year. It's county-specific, so it's based on the median for Napa County. And it changes depending on the number of people in, that make up that household. So the median income, this is the latest one for Napa County, for a four-person household is $91,000. So you can see what that means for this four-person household. Very low income is up to $47,000. Low income is going to be between $47,000 and $74,000, et cetera. So that's what those income categories are. Your regional housing need allocation is distributed among those four income categories. And so right now, we're in this middle of this fifth cycle, and the RENA for 2014 to 2022 is 17 units distributed this way. Four for very low, two for low, three for moderate, and eight for above moderate. One way of kind of, and this is how it's shown in the housing element, is we combine the low and the very low income, and the moderate and the above moderate income. It kind of helps to simplify this, this discussion a little bit. But essentially, the low and very low income is going to require higher dense, land that's zoned at a higher density, 20 units and above for default density. And it's also probably going to require some incentives, perhaps some development variances, and very often, some kind of fiscal, financial subsidy. Moderate and above moderate income units are typically, but not always, market rate units. And so moderate income units are considered affordable at market rates for smaller units. So we're talking about things like second units, apartments in multifamily buildings, maybe even an apartment in a mixed-use development, so it's an apartment on a second story with commercial underneath. So all of those are generally considered affordable to moderate income households at market rates. So the RENA requirement was six and 11. The housing element had identified approved projects. So if they were already approved, they could be counted in the housing element. You could deduct them from your RENA allocation. And those are shown here. I know it's kind of hard to see it here, but probably in your packet, you can see it better. The approved projects were identified, they're identified there in green. The, the largest one, probably the most significant one for the conversation here is the Vineyard Oaks project. And that had 16 units, two of them affordable to lower income, and two affordable to moderate income. So when we look at the built units, and this includes that Vineyard Oaks had currently, there have been two units built that satisfy the low and very low income category, and 23 units that satisfy the moderate and above moderate income. So there's only a remaining RENA of four units for low and very low.
And I'll just jump in here to mention that those are the numbers we brought to at your last meeting to show how we're meeting our objectives.
So just to, go ahead. We haven't heard from you yet.
I know, but that's because I was late.
Go ahead.
And I don't mean to put all this on you, but it's a lot easier sometimes than just Googling this and trying to read through all of it. Can you explain to me then, that none of the old, quote-unquote, "old" projects that we've had in the past would qualify for this? Aurora Grande or the other locations? Everything needs to be something new moving forward, correct?
Those units were counted in the last housing element cycle.
And so every cycle begins anew. Thank you.
Right, exactly.
So before you get off the affordability topic, I just wanted to emphasize, if we want to put some type of notation in that Veterans Home housing piece, that, as you properly identified, it's very difficult to get low and very low income because of the cost of the land in, I'll call it, the town proper. The land acquisition piece is removed for the Veterans Home because they already own the property. So the opportunity to provide the lower categories is potentially much greater to fulfill our needs with the Veterans Home housing piece.
The end outcome could be, Mayor, but unfortunately, we have the responsibility to zone for those four, and that's when they come back to, we have to show that we have potential sites. If we were able to get that done, then we can report it, and it probably bodes very well for the next cycle if we're able to be successful, but you're right.
I think it could be this cycle, because if we can get, whatever the commitment we need to get from the Department of Veterans Affairs that identifies a housing piece on their property, why couldn't that be just as effective as identifying housing at the North End Ag Parcel that we don't control either? If we're saying that's going to satisfy future housing development, why couldn't we do that on the Veterans Home campus if the Vets Home designates an area for future housing?
The right now, what we're showing is what hasn't been built. So to your effort, if we can secure that commitment.
That's what I'm saying.
Then it would be, but we don't have it secured. So that's what I, the challenge is getting them to do something that HCD would accept.
Sure.
And that's what.
But it's worth the effort. And also, do we even know if the existing single-family homes on the property have been counted ever in the town? They have a dozen or so homes there.
The good news there is, we don't on how that may have been reported. But again, what we want to focus on, there's two things here. One is, this is a report on what's actually been built, and then there's what have we zoned?
I'm looking at this slide that says, "Remaining RENA numbers four." And I'm saying, if we could get Cal Vet to say, we are committing to even their own numbers of 129. In that 129, if we had them say, we are committing X percent to low and very low income, that may help us satisfy the current cycle.
It could, and we would, and we would need to take that.
The current cycle we're satisfied through 2023. So this would only become a problem if something falls out of the inventory and we're required to address it as part of the no net loss. But yes, that offers a potential when, if we have to go back to the state.
Okay.
And that's before 2023.
Okay.
And that's also why, when we look at our going forward, I think it's really appropriate, and it really helps to set the stage for the next cycle.
Right. Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm glad you brought this up, because we talked about this when we were listening to the report on your annual element progress report, on that report. And I asked the question, because it states in the reporting period in number 21, that where conversion of residentially-zoned land to commercial uses is permitted, require provisions for adequate affordable housing to compensate for the loss of residential units. And we didn't have an answer to that. I mean, I'm talking about the residential overlay for these six units that we're talking about on Washington Street. If we do that, that commercial overlay on those six properties, are we then increasing our need to up the RENA by six additional?
No, because of that, that policy can formulate the land use policy that we have for those properties, and it could be that those are required to be live-work units. So it's currently a unit now. If it's live-work, it just adds the commercial component to it. So it's possible that we can address the loss of a traditional single-family house, but that it still provides a housing option.
Can we require that that housing option be a low, an affordable housing option?
No, I don't believe we can, no. Because it's a constructed unit. That's definitely a question for the attorney, because that could be considered a taking.
Here's what I would say. I think, Vice Mayor, counsel to your concern, if we were to offer incentives, whether it would be financial or development. would be financial or development bonus, then I think you do have the right in a going-forward way to put those requirements retroactively to the built environment I'm pretty uncomfortable with.
Councilor Dorman?
Thank you. Just, so we have, our obligation for low and very low is six. We have two built, so we have four remaining. Let's say it gets to be almost January 1, 2023, and we still have four remaining. Have we satisfied our obligation simply by saying we have a site should someone choose to develop it with low and very low?
Yes.
And I would, I would also mention that if the units are not built, because they are being, you're reporting every year to HCD. And, and in the RENA process, the ABAG does look, the state and ABAG does look at what the success of the cities and towns had in meeting the RENA. So if you haven't met it, it could mean that you'll have a higher number. It's not, not automatically rolled over, but it could influence the number that you're given for the next housing element cycle. So there is, you are absolutely encouraged to meet the number. There is an encouragement for that.
And in an environment like ours where it is difficult to meet the low and very low, what sanctions might apply other than possibly a higher number for the next cycle? If we, if we, if we have the land available, but no one takes opportunity to build the units, is there a downside or a sanction to us as the town?
Yes. SB 35 streamlining comes into play. And if we're not meeting our, the pro-rata share of the, of those low units, we could be required to approve a certain level of development within 90 days, and it takes away some of our discretionary approval authority. However, we will probably be in the category that only applies if 50% of a project is affordable to very low and low-income properties, which probably wouldn't apply in town because even with our inclusionary ordinance, and that's a development of five or more parcels or sites, 15% is required to be affordable and an FAR bonus up to, if 25% is affordable. So we're not going to hit that 50%. So we probably don't risk that 90-day streamlining, but it is a threat that the state is using. And then for jurisdictions that aren't providing any low income, and I guess we might fall into that if we don't provide some of these four over the next few years, is that the 10% affordability applies, that we would be doing the streamlining. And that could very well be triggered because of the inclusionary housing ordinance. Thank you.
Well, the other issue.
It's another example of the state taking control away from us.
The other issue is, is having a housing element that's no longer valid, and then we lose potential state funding, correct? That, regardless of SB 35.
Right.
So we would, you're not required in each cycle to actually build. You have to show the ability to build. We've had a fairly high success rate of actually building the units, not just saying we're going to. But eventually, I think is what your point is, if you keep just saying you're going to build them and you don't have a record of actually constructing them, the state will crack down on you. And now SB 35 is a new tool that the state can use to crack down on you.
And that's only new since January 1st.
Yeah. And I do want to say, I'm, we're being very direct with you, but I also think the town of Yountville, for a community of our size, nature, and level of build-out, has done a lot of tremendously positive thing towards housing. So we would certainly do our best to say, look, we've got some unique constraints. Here's what we're attempting to do, and work with us. I mean, that's what your staff perspective would be. I mean, we literally are getting to where we can take a look at that map and show you. I mean, we have a unique situation, and it may be more of a funding that we'd have to look at, but the, you know, the Catholic Church owns properties that perhaps with the right development partner and our financial situation could be, you know, built with a higher affordability component because that's consistent with the church mission. But there's a lot of moving, moving parts. Certainly to the mayor's point, I don't want to underestimate that if we were able to get something to move forward at the veterans home, we're talking about numbers of a magnitude that are very unique in Yountville. And hopefully, we could negotiate a credit for many cycles. That would be staff's perspective, but again, we don't control the state law. But we are dealing with some very unique constraints in terms of that while trying to work both fronts.
The other unique element to Napa County is our sub-RENA, which allows us to negotiate with the other jurisdictions within Napa County. Again, hypothetical, as we have four very low and low-income unit requirements, we could potentially provide housing money to another jurisdiction that would then build those units, and we would get credit for those units. So we have the ability to trade, and we could also do that with housing that would be in excess of what we need if we get the development of the housing in the veterans home. In the hundreds of units category, others have already, we've already talked to other jurisdictions about helping them satisfy their housing need with what we would consider an abundance of housing. We want to be careful about what we trade, but we, we don't see needing 300 housing units anytime soon. We might get 300.
And I, and I think that's an important point, Mayor, that if we are able to develop a relationship with the veterans home on housing, it would be a unique, a truly unique and out of scale with ours. But again, when we talk about it, we have a level of infrastructure that can support 200 to 300, maybe even 400 units of housing within the community. A lot of the roadway and support structure. So it would be a unique footnote in the Napa County region, and probably a number of partners would come forward in terms of helping to make that a reality. And that continues to be the conversation. As you know, county has indicated a willingness. We have, we have lots of people that are interested. We just really need to, to get the Department of Veterans Affairs to have a more affirmative approach to working with us so that we can get some commitments on paper.
Right. Councilor Durham?
And to speak to Vice Mayor's questions about the, if we were to rezone Washington, isn't that what though could happen if we were to determine that possibly mixed use in three stories could work on the business side of Washington Street? Is to then do what you're saying with mixed use and offering incentives to be able to do and fill a lot of this? Is that fair to say that?
Well, I wanted to, sorry, I'm confused about the question a little bit because I was thinking of something else.
Sure. Thank you for admitting that. While I was talking, thank you.
The rezoning of the six North Washington parcels doesn't affect these RENA allocation numbers because they're not identified in the current housing element. Although, we do have those separate housing policies on loss of housing for conversion. And then when we look at parcels like the Two Humble parcels, those are two market rates. So those don't force us to go back and, and look at these numbers, which is why they're, they're not identified. So what we're looking at in, so we're good through 2023. The only way that we would be forced to readdress it is if one of these four units fell out of contention. And the only possibility there would be is if the French Laundry Garden parcel develops as a hotel and they don't provide housing. And if that happens, and I'm sorry, I'm jumping into Christine's presentation, we'd be forced to show that we can do housing for a very low or low-income household, one unit, which we may be able to satisfy by going to the state and saying, there's a veterans home plan, and there are these affordable units. And so we may be able to sail through 2023 even if that French Laundry Garden parcel falls out. We might be able to show that second-story development downtown if it's acceptable to the community as something. And we don't really have to go to that North Ag parcel until at least the next cycle. And we don't even have to speak as to the potential that we definitely want that as housing, but just as part of this process to explore whether it's acceptable to the community or not. If it isn't, we'll find other solutions. Staff is not promoting that North Ag parcel. We're just presenting, hey, what are our options to flesh out? So now, I'm sorry, now that I've rambled, what was your question?
No, but you've covered it though, because that was my discussion. That was my, the basis of my question was if, if we all decide that some sort of development could be done on two-story mixed use, that could then be offering the incentive that the town manager was talking about earlier to incentivize for more of this low-income or, or at least moderate housing. It could, it could qualify for that in the future.
Provided it's a development of five or more units and that inclusionary ordinance kicks in, because we have to get one of those as low income.
But if, if, so understood, but then even if we just had allowed for a two-story mixed use in front of Grosenger Estates across the street, couldn't we then incentivize?
Encourage.
Conceptually, I think what we're getting into is, especially if we're dealing with the potential development of the French Laundry Garden parcel, there may be ways for us to address that in a master development agreement that get us there. Again, though, a master development agreement is not zoning. So we may be able to be okay, but if we have to show something on, on, from our zoning plans, we wouldn't. But there's a number of, your staff's been working on ideas so that we have several to move forward. I also want to stress, just because when Sandra and I were chatting, the North Washington, even though some of those may be considered more affordable, none of those are deed restricted or they're all market rate, even though they may be smaller and some of our lower rent, they're not in that affordable category.
And before we go, we have a public comment or question.
Thank you. I'm Luciana Duarte from 1953 Yountville Crossroad, and I'm very heartened to hear this last half hour or so of conversation because I'm very concerned about what happens to the North parcel. So hearing all of the possibilities and alternatives to that is heartening to me, and will also be for all of our neighbors because I'm going to share with them what I've heard today. Some of them wanted to be here but couldn't on a, in the middle of the day on a weekday. So I took the fall. But the reason that that's important to us is because, and this is kind of similar to the issue that we were talking about before in terms of the importance of language, I think even designating something as housing reserve already introduces the possibility that it could be considered. And that, that starts to open the floodgates. And so if at all possible, we would urge you, myself and my husband and my neighbors, to consider alternatives before we go that route because it does kind of put us on a path that evolves towards something that most of us really don't want to see, at least from that part of town. I do appreciate that there is the, the conversation coming up on April 26th. And I, my concern with that, although this process has been great and, you know, we feel like we're welcome to, to share our opinion, I was at the, one of the ones last year, I think it was in November. And the way the, the process was set up was very sort of, it was called Envision, Envision Yountville. And so it was very kind of open-ended, you know? Well, imagine if, you know, what would it look if? And so that's what people were reacting to. But then it's sort of the, the responses from that sort of get characterized as this is what residents want. And that wasn't what I heard in that workshop. So I would urge us to, if we're going to do that again, to do that in a, in a less biased way so that you can really understand what people are reacting to as opposed to sort of, you know, inviting people to imagine, but then sort of characterizing their perspectives as this is what they want. And those are, those are two different things.
And we have 20 cookies for you over there.
Excellent. Thank you.
For your comment. The first public comment. Maybe 40 cookies, I'm not sure. I think that is the, we've said it today a couple of times at least, and want to keep repeating this, that these are concepts that have been discussed as, and Sandra, you just said it, possibilities, no commitment to them, just analyzing what our options are for consideration. And we've got a ways to go to get to the defined content, but making sure that everybody understands that is a little bit more challenging sometimes.
And to your point, Mayor, on that, we need to remind everybody that all of our, you know, Sandra walked us through a little bit of the historical perspective of change and development. And the zoning inside the town limits is very different since the advent of the Ag Preserve. And we take on responsibilities. And, you know, we need to remind ourselves also that many parcels that are now everybody is familiar with in terms of their built-out environment, at some point in time while they were inside the town limits, they were orchards, they were agricultural, they were vineyards, and they were ultimately built out and now house many of us. So it's just part of that. But I think the process and the points made by the speaker, you know, are reflective, and we, we put all of that in together, and we do appreciate the, the feedback because we know for a lot of folks, that's, that is different. Change is a very challenging part of this discussion.
Well, of course, it's very easy for people to live on the south or east side of town to say, let's build the north end, and then vice versa. So we get, we get that for sure. And again, ideas thrown out, evaluated through our tag, through these workshops, eventually we'll get to things that we are defining as our expectations. But there's still, and I think Councilor Dorman was one that was highlighting this at our last, last workshop, it's hard to look at the first five things when the next five things influence the first five things. And if we're successful in getting Calvet to partner with us on housing, that eliminates a lot of the issues we're talking about, about housing everywhere else in town. But until that happens, we still have to evaluate what all those options are. So some of this is going to maybe not be pursued long-term at all, but we have to talk through it all. So, okay. Where are we?
Okay. Shall I continue?
Yes.
We might be going over some, some of the ground we've already covered, so I'll try to, try to go quickly. I did want to mention one thing because we were having a conversation about whether you can use the mixed use in order to satisfy your RENA. And this would apply to then, probably to the next housing element, although there might be a case that could apply now. There is a requirement that only 50% of your lower income need is met through mixed use. So you would still need to have land that was zoned only for residential use to, to address some of the requirements. So that's something to keep, there are a lot of, a lot of laws that, that impact this. So the remaining RENA is four units. And I, and I just want to kind of talk about how this was, is addressed in your housing element now, because what's actually written in your site inventory ends up being very important. You can't just say, oh, well, we're not going to, we're going to use something else. You have to address with what's written. So there are underutilized parcels that were looked at in the housing element. They were identified to accommodate 26 units, but they're all single, all zoned, single-family residential. And these, there were five sites that were identified that could accommodate additional single-family housing, but because it's single-family housing, that's high, that's above moderate income. So that doesn't help to satisfy those four very low units. And then there is vacant land. And the vacant land that was identified in the housing element shows potential for 18 low and very low-income units and 27 moderate and above moderate income units. And again, we're, we're really not concerned about the moderate and above moderate income units because you've already more than satisfied those units. In fact, if you do lose units, you still are above, you know, even with like redevelopment of North Washington or Hum, North Washington parcels, you're still above what the requirement was for moderate. So you've got some, some room there. The vacant land parcels, one of the, well, one is the, the church, the Catholic Church property. And because most of that is, virtually all of it, is in a floodplain, the housing element identifies land, housing development potential in a kind of a smaller area clustered where it's further, nearly out of the floodplain. And it identifies 18 units, market rate units, and says that three of those units, because of the inclusionary requirement, would be affordable to lower income. So there's three units there. Now, there's still one more unit to go, which is what Sandra was referring to. And that's satisfied by this French Laundry Garden site. And that is zoned, primary commercial, but it also has an affordable housing overlay which allows a residential density of 20 to 25 units per acre depending on the, the affordability levels. So the housing element makes a case that there could be, there's potential there for 15 units affordable to lower-income households. And that's where that, that one remaining unit comes into play. If that site is developed with no housing, it If that site is developed with no housing at all, now we are in a position where the town has to address this no-net-loss provision of housing element law. And basically what that says is that before you can approve a new development, if you're going to approve a development at a reduced density or a development that has no housing and you now are left with a remaining RENA that cannot be satisfied by the other sites that have been identified in that housing sites inventory, you're going to have to come up with a new site that's going, that can accommodate that one housing unit. And it has to be at a site that is zoned at the same or greater residential development. So it would be possible to find a site, like a primary commercial site, that has potential for affordable housing and you could get an affordable housing unit on that site. But you would have to make that site, that identify that at the time that the development is approved. And you would also, if you have to rezone, you would have to rezone within 90 days in order to find a site that you can swap out, that French Garden Laundry Garden site that is not going to be developed with housing. So I just wanted to mention that. Kind of swinging back again to this program, the Polissa property is in, there's a program in the housing element that specifically says to continue to retain the current agricultural zoning on that North Ag parcel. And as we mentioned, and we kind of discussed this at the last, at the last study session, we have been considering this potential of rezoning that 33-acre North parcel to allow some mixed residential development. The tag did not support it. They were split four to five. The ZDRB, the three commissioners or board members who were present were actually in favor of mixed residential use on that parcel, but recommended a smaller area for housing and maintaining the view corridor specifically. There was concern about the view corridor from Yountville Crossroad, looking as you were driving to the west and looking at the hills beyond. So this is kind of the housing development, and we presented this to you at the last meeting as well. The idea here is that there would be considering development of smaller parcels. These are two, three-acre parcels. And this isn't meant to be actually what the design, the site plan would look like. The housing could actually be pulled back further from Yountville Crossroad. There could be a pedestrian path in front of it. It was really just more to kind of give you a sense of the number of units and the grid pattern that could be used. There's also here shown a park to the northeast of that parcel. The zoning district that we were talking about is a mixed residential zoning district that would allow eight to 10 dwelling units per acre. 50% of them would be, have to be single-family homes, a minimum of 25% multifamily. And it would be subject to the inclusionary zoning, which requires for developments of five or more units, that 15% of them are affordable. And that has to be equally distributed among the low, very low, and moderate income categories. So essentially, if we were looking at that development scenario, kind of taking the lower end of it, which is about eight units per acre, those two parcels, those two smaller areas of three acres each would accommodate 30 single-family homes, 15 multifamily units. The requirement for the inclusionary would be seven affordable units, broken out as three very low, too low, and too moderate. Would just like to mention that although, so this, that parcel could be used to obligate, to address a no-net-loss situation if that were to come to pass. It could also be used for your housing element, if we identify that as housing reserve, for your next housing element. The projections now for the housing element are showing probably 20 new housing units by 2040. That's just the 2017 projections. The projections are updated every two years, so who knows what will be in the future. But if it was another 20 units, that would probably be another seven to eight affordable units. So it is possible that in the next housing element cycle, you're going to have another requirement for, define another additional seven to eight units. There's also new state housing element law that makes it more difficult to carry over sites, vacant sites that haven't been developed. So the, like the Catholic Church parcel, which if it's been in two housing elements and it still hasn't been developed, then it's, there's a higher burden of proof to say that it really is developable, that the constraints that are on that property aren't so significant that they are reducing the actual potential for housing development or that there would be an opportunity for the town to say how they were going to address those constraints, like the floodplain constraint, in order to make that actually more feasible for housing development.
So, can I make a comment? So I think another possibility that, if we're just talking about all the possibilities, is that we do not have to, we could stay silent on the housing reserve on that parcel because we're allowed to update our general plan four times a year. And we don't really have any issue for at least four more years that we've talked about. So another option would be to do nothing and, you know, maybe if something did come up four years from now, then we could address it at that time. So I think that's another possible option.
That's absolutely a possibility.
Right. And that's why staff's not recommending that the housing element be updated, but we also need to prepare you and the community. If you're looking at something in a 10- to 20-year horizon, not addressing something that we see as a potential hiccup or roadblock in the road at year four is not a very, very forward-thinking process. But you're absolutely correct and we can lay those out, but it may very well be that the community in four years will have to revisit some of those options. But at least you will have had a starter course, if you will, on what those options are.
Yeah, we should have clarity on the potential for the Veterans Home to be housing that counts for us, certainly within the four-year window, hopefully within a much tighter window than that. So if we decide not to change a designation even as a potential, then long before this cycle ends, we'll know what our real numbers are looking like.
Well, it's notoriously difficult to get an answer out of HCD, and I've already posed that question to them. So the town attorney has jumped in to give us advice. And it will be an argument that we're making to HCD if we have to approach it in this housing cycle or the next one, that we want to count those units. We probably won't know in advance until we're in it and making that argument to them. But we've already presented the idea that we plan on doing that. And especially if that housing is to be developed by a private developer on Veterans Home property, I think we have a really great argument.
Right. Okay, I think we're down to like one or two slides.
Yes, this is the last slide, and I just wanted to kind of address this idea of a housing reserve, if the community and the council was interested in pursuing this at all. It would allow the continued agricultural use on whatever area was designated as housing reserve. And the agricultural use allows, what we're proposing is a maximum of a .05 FAR, floor area ratio for commercial. And the use that's allowed are commercial facilities for processing or retail sale of agricultural products grown on the premises. And one dwelling unit per 10 acres is what's currently allowed in your zoning code for the agricultural zoning district. So that would continue to be allowed on the property. And essentially, it just would create an opportunity for housing development sometime in the future. It wouldn't actually change the zoning itself. It would just flag it for future development and it might help to set the direction so that the town, you know, we were already having this discussion now. So that was, that was it.
So even if we don't support the idea of adding this housing reserve designation or title, the property owner could come to us at any time and say, we want to request a zoning change, and we would deal with it then through that process that already exists. So with or without this housing reserve component, that may still happen.
Absolutely.
Or it could stay as it is indefinitely.
Yes, although it's not just a zoning ordinance amendment, it's a general plan amendment because of that policy we looked at in the housing element that that parcel will stay Ag. So it triggers both.
But...
But yes, it's potentially something that they could request to change.
Yeah. This is not a required first step for them to consider anything going forward, right?
Oh, that's right. So we just wanted to wrap up with sort of a timeline of where we're going, since we have some meetings coming up. And let's see, this one shows.
53.
It shows where we are now. So the tag meetings have been occurring since July. They're, the tag is not meeting in April, but we envision this going through May. And we're preparing for community group presentations in April. On April 25th, we'll meet with the Veterans Home and also with the business community. And we'll bring them policies specific to their interests and get feedback from them. The following day, on April 26th, we're holding the third community workshop. That'll be in this building. It's a meeting from 6:00 to 9:00 at night. And we're really going to use that as an opportunity to explore those options and really try to get some real valuable feedback from the community so that we can start drafting that general plan. Be going back for input from the boards and the council in May and June. And then, and then we start drafting that general plan. And then these next few are just wrapping up the process, that we are striving to hold a community open house in August if this process goes smoothly. Then we'll draft the EIR and come back for ZDRB and council review, potentially sometime at the end of the year for our general plan adoption.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
So are the council members allowed to attend the community group presentations on the April 25th and 26th?
Yes, we may need to agendize those as council meetings just to be safe in case three or more of you show up because it is topic, a subject matter within your jurisdiction.
And then the final one on the 18th as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Nathan grabbed the microphone on that.
I was just going to say the workshops and the open houses would be agendas of the town advisory group. And if there's an agenda of a body, other bodies such as the council or ZDRB is welcome to attend that as long as it's agendized by one of the groups. So it'll likely be an agenda of the town advisory group.
And what we have done in the past, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong about these two community group presentations and workshops, is the council is asked to not really participate but be present and observe. Is that accurate? Yeah, so we're not leading discussions, we're kind of silently listening and not trying to intrude too much, but we're welcome to be present if we want to be there and can be there.
Thank you.
I have one last question I've been thinking about, so maybe we can start the discussion or figure out how we're going to deal with it. So eventually, the general plan adoption will come to the council for approval. Say we, you know, one, two, three of us have, you know, a couple of real sticking points with some of the policies and we just, you know, aren't in agreement with a majority. How are we going to, or is there some suggestion how we work through that so we don't each, let's say three of us really have a, be in our bond at about three different issues? How do we work through that just from experience? I've never approved a general plan, so...
It'll be a long meeting is what it'll be.
I'm hoping that, but any helpful hints?
Well, I'm going to smile and then I'm going to say ultimately, you know, there will need to be a motion. And I'm going to refer to the community to the north of us that has been working, going on 10 years on their general plan. And I say that, but if the council can't reach a consensus on moving forward, then you don't. And I'm just going to be honest. That's a very good question, Councilmember Moller, because, you know, I think what you will probably find is that, you know, for many of you, as you start seeing, and I know many of you, you like to look at a product, so seeing the product and the policies is going to be important as we draft. There may be a few that has to be refined. And then ultimately, I think you, you know, you narrow down to those small numbers and see where, just like you, when you've had to work through other challenging conversations, you'll work through what are the motions on those. Or you continue to, the option that staff wouldn't like is you continue to keep it going, but without feedback from you on how you want to change it. Because at that point, you will have had the tag recommendation. You will have had the benefit of public workshops. And we know going in that not everybody is going to agree with every policy. And then ultimately, that's going to be up for the council deliberation and discussion.
Yeah. If we do our job right, we're not going to get to that kind of a stalemate at the end.
Right. Because in advance, we're going to bring you the draft and go policy through by policy. If we're getting the sense that one of those policies doesn't have consensus support, we would work to eliminate it before we bring you the final draft. And Christine, can you share some more?
Any final thoughts from the audience?
Thank you for taking our perspective on all sides.
Thank you. Susan?
I just appreciate every, every step that's done to facilitate the project. It's been a pleasure to work with everybody.
And normally, I would have made both of you come up to the microphone, but you've been so gracious to sit here for two and a half hours. I'm not going to do that. Thank you both for being here. Anything else? Seeing no other business for us for today, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to April 3rd, our regular meeting at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I think this went very well, very clear, flowed really, really nicely. Thank you.